My name is Juan Nguyen. My pronouns are he/him. I am the Director of External Affairs for AAPI Equity Alliance. We co-founded Stop AAPI Hate, the national organization. And I'm also on the L.A. City Commission for Civil Rights.
Welcome to The Vietnamese. I'm your host, Kenneth Nguyen. Being part of a culture of nearly 100 million Vietnamese people in the world today comes with a lot of pain, proud history and privilege. Join me as I highlight and explore the Vietnamese experience from all of-- Thank you so much for coming on today. You co-founded Stop AAPI Hate. Can you tell me how that happened?
So, the organization, AAPI Equity Alliance, that I'm working for right now, co-founded Stop API Hate in 2020. When we heard about a middle school student in L.A. being beaten up by his classmates on the recess playground and was punched repeatedly, you know, on his head to the point where he had to be hospitalized and was called a coronavirus carrier, "You should go back to China." But these are by middle school students. This happened in February of 2020, before there was even a single case of confirmed coronavirus in L.A. County. And so, that was a canary in the coal mine for us, right? We knew that this was gonna get worse before it was gonna get better. And we knew that Asian-Americans were gonna be the primary target-- targets, because federal leaders, frankly, who are stoking blame and fear and xenophobia, calling this the Kung Flu virus, the China virus. And so, people conflated that with the fact that Asian-Americans-- or the myth that Asian-Americans were carrying this virus and spreading it everywhere. And so, the hate was starting to ramp up. We knew that the incidents, you know, day-to-day hate incidents were not being reported. We saw that, you know, even though the hate crimes, the heinous killings were being reported, we knew that the day-to-day shunning, verbal harassment, you know, spitting and calling Asian-Americans slurs were not being reported. And so, our co-founders, Manjusha Kokarni and a couple of others started a Google form, basically. And within-- and she posted it online. And within a couple of weeks, we got hundreds of incident reports from all over the country. And now, we have over-- three years later, we have over 11,000 incident reports. Just regular people going about their regular lives and being harassed and verbally abused and calling-- being called racial slurs. So, that process is still going on. It's under-reported. We know that the number is under-reported. And so, we are still keeping track of the incidents. And so, you should report your incident, stopapihate.org.
How did that kid get being name-called so early on before the spread of the news of the virus?
I think when we talk about API Hate, we have to talk about the holistic picture, right? Which is that this has been going on way before coronavirus even existed. Asian-Americans have faced discrimination systemically, personally, for centuries, frankly. It started with the first Chinese Exclusion Act of 1814, the alien land laws that targeted our communities, saying that-- those laws were in the 1800s. And so, we have a system. And frankly, right now, the system is not made for our communities, our parents and grandparents who don't speak English, who are new immigrants to this country. These laws discriminate against them. They can't access government services, right? And so, everywhere you look within the system, there's gonna be laws that disproportionately impact our communities. But those also manifest in interpersonal relationships. So, when that is coupled with the fear stoked by federal leaders, the previous president, it becomes a whole flame of racism that our communities then have to face. So, when that child was the target of a beating, that was just one of the many, many, many incidents that we know, you know, happened. And so, it is not new. And it is not rare either. These incidents are happening all over the place. And that's why at Stop API Hate, we have several state bills that seek to address this. In the past couple of years, we've ran-- we've sponsored a couple of state bills to address hate on a systemic level, right? Often, people think about hate as crimes, as physical assaults or destruction of property. But to be frank, our data shows that 80% of the 11,000 incidents we collected do not rise to the level of criminal behavior. Meaning, you know, there was no physical assaults involved or no destruction of property. They were verbal harassment. They were, you know, discrimination by a business or a school. But we can't lock somebody up because of it, right? The laws in this country don't allow you to lock somebody up because somebody called you a racial slur. So, 80% of our incidents don't involve a hate crime, right? So, how do we address these violations of civil rights? And that's something that I am, you know, appointed by the mayor of L.A. to do on the L.A. City Commission on Civil Rights. Because even though those behaviors are not criminal, they are still violations of people's civil rights. In this country, you have a right to be in public, in public settings, without fear of discrimination based on a protected characteristic that you have. Which is, you know, for me, one of the protected characteristics I have is that I'm an Asian queer man. And so, those are characteristics that make me, frankly, target of discrimination. But people cannot do that in a public setting against me, right? They can't discriminate against me because I'm a gay Asian man. And so, in L.A. City, there is a-- under the L.A. City ordinance, the law prohibits this kind of discrimination. And on the commission that I serve, we are the agency that are tasked with-- that is tasked with enforcing that law. So, we get cases that come to our commission of landlords discriminating against tenants because of the color of their skin, businesses discriminating against customers, or your neighbor is, you know, every day hurling racial epithets at you. That is not a normal way to live. That causes racial trauma. Even though there's no physical attacks involved, even though it doesn't rise to the level of a hate crime, those are still civil rights violations. You have a right to live safely from discrimination without having to go through that every day, right? And so, we are the agency tasked with enforcing that law. And so, we will get cases and complaints, and we will pursue an investigation. And if need be, we will issue fines for notices of violations and take people to court and enforce the law to make sure that everyone in L.A. can live safely and freely expressing whatever identities that they identify with.
Are there these sort of commissions in other cities in the United States?
Unfortunately, there are far and few in between. L.A. City is taking the lead, is really providing leadership on this issue. In the state of California, there is a California Civil Rights Department that is just ramping up their enforcement mechanism. So, in California, yes. In other cities, no. So, in cities such as Westminster, where a heavy Vietnamese population live, there is no civil rights commission that is imbued with statutory authority by that. I mean, like, within the law books, they have, you know, something written about them that says, like, "You can enforce this law." So, some cities have civil rights commissions without any teeth, frankly. And we would like that to change. We would like L.A. to be the model for other cities to replicate, right? Our department comes with a lot of funding, with investigators, right? Like, we have a bunch of people who are just tasked with getting cases and then investigating those cases. And we have the law on our side, the authority within the law books to go out and issue fines.
I can imagine-- I can imagine a city like Westminster, where Little Saigon is centrally located for the Vietnamese community. I can imagine-- and I'm gonna play devil's advocate because this is a-- you brought up the city of Westminster. It's predominantly Vietnamese. We probably do a lot of the abusing, the maybe the bullying perhaps, right? I'm just imagining out loud that as a predominantly stronger, more-- you know, more population of Vietnamese, we're probably often the ones doing the discrimination. And, you know, that exists in our culture. Now, when we think about Stop Asian Hate, I often think about the discrimination that we often perpetrate on other minorities. Now, do you get reports from other minorities that Asians are discriminating on them?
Hmm. We don't get those reports because I think, you know, our branding is about, you know, "If you're Asian, you've been discriminated against, report to us." But you're making a great point, which is that bigotry is not exclusively white, right? All races can-- can--
Discriminate.
Discriminate against another race, unfortunately. And within the Asian community, we have some work to do in that regard. And we wanna be allies with our Black, Latinos, Native American brothers and sisters in this fight. Because we are all in this together. And we didn't come here. We weren't the first ones here. We will not be the last ones here. And this is not our land. These are, you know, these are the lands of the Native people that Americans took over. And so, we need to recognize that whatever prejudice that we hold for other races, we need to cut that out. And there's frankly, a lot of work to do in that regard, you know, within even my own family, that people still spew anti-Black sentiments, anti-Latino, anti-immigrants. And we are immigrants. I am an immigrant myself. And yet, some in my family, you know, do not want other people to come to this "our" country, quote-unquote, and take our jobs, as if we have a right to these things. And so, you're right. We, as an Asian community, need to reckon with the fact that we should be better allies to other communities of color.
And when I think about the irony of, you know, this kind of discrimination that happens between minorities, when you really think about it-- because you brought up something earlier-- at the federal level, at the level that is beyond these communities of minorities, it's controlled by, really, by white politicians like Donald Trump. And the rhetoric of what is handed down is coming from a very white sort of structure. And it gets down to the Black communities or the Latino communities. And, you know, oftentimes, here in L.A., it's not white people perpetrating--
Yeah.
--these sort of crimes on Asians. It's really minorities on minorities. It's such an ironic thing, if you think about, you know, just the Kung Flu idea coming from the mouth of a white man, and then it gets beaten down on a kid by other minorities.
Yeah, it's an interesting-- I mean, I think what you're saying is that white supremacy has a way of turning us against each other. And that's the whole point, right?
Right, exactly.
They want us to be distracted against each other so we don't notice that their special interests, friends are pillaging the treasury. They are--
But it's like, is it a concerted effort? Or is it really the operative sort of nature of politics where those kind of divisive comments are really-- what's really driving the narratives for these politicians? And then, in turn, they get the votes and, you know-- but it turns down into this really messy situation for, you know, these communities of colors like ours in the inner cities.
Yeah, it's definitely a concerted effort. So, let me tell you-- let's take, for example, what's happening with trans people and trans rights and the attacks against them, right? Why do we think that these attacks are ramping up just right before an election year, right? Trans people have been around--
Yeah.
--these issues have been around. So, why is it that there are hundreds of legislations and bills targeted against trans people, just introduced this year, right before an election year?
That's all to garner the votes, the eyeballs.
Yeah, so, do we really think that those politicians really care? Like, what's happening with trans people? Or do they just need a scapegoat? So that they can blame and point the fingers at? While we are all distracted, looking at what they're pointing at, they are then running these plays to get their friends, you know, the special treatment, the special tax treatment. So, their billionaire friends get richer and richer. So, we have to look at-- you know, whenever politicians tell you to care about something or to look at this, you gotta question their motives, first of all, right? And I do believe it's a concerted effort, right? There are memos probably being written about this. There are meetings happening of like, "Oh, how do we maximize this political moment?" Right? Because we have the-- the internet is our friend. And we go on there and we stoke fears. And, you know, people sit in their phones and look at it. And they truly feel like, "Oh, why do-- why should I support trans people?" And I think they're a little weird. And maybe that politician is right. And then, I should not associate myself with that. So--
This is a great point. Because I literally was debating this two nights ago with some family members from South Carolina. You know, they were saying that I don't want trans and queer community media or the presence of a drag queen reading at, you know, in my classroom or library. And I really question that. Because what you're saying about election years and the momentum that you need to point fingers really kind of elevate the profile of a campaign. And, you know, when we think about these situations, like a drag queen reading at a library or whatever, it's politicized to really push these political campaigns along. And then, in turn, it really persecutes the trans and the LGBT communities. And it got me so heated, and we start to really get loud. And, you know, I had to dial it back a few notches. Because, you know, when we're living in a big city like L.A. on the coast, you know, our perceptions are very different from a Vietnamese woman living in South Carolina. You know, it's different. It's just the-- we're just human beings, like robots, that are programmed, wherever we are, to see certain things. It's just mind-blowing.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you tried to lower the temperature, right? Because these conversations need to be had. And they can't be had if we continue to yell past each other. I get very worked up about this issue because frankly, these attacks against LGBTQ+ communities are getting dangerous, right? People are being shot for just hanging a pride flag outside their store. And these legislations have a very, very detrimental effect on trans queer kids. They are committing suicides because of these bills. You know, they are-- like, in Orange County, let's take in our own backyard. The Orange County School Board of Education is trying to out-trans kids, like, trying to make teachers mandated reporters to out-trans kids to their parents if a child is looking to identify by a different pronoun than what they present. That is insane. That is not the role of teachers. Teachers shouldn't be doing that. I bet many, many teachers don't want to do that. And yet, we have, you know, politicians, basically, dictating what children's lives should be, right? They often say, like, "We want small government, we want small government." Well, this is not small government. This is, you know, edging on authoritarianism. Like, you're literally making lists of children who identify as trans. And what do we do with that?
What is the purpose of identifying trans kids?
I mean, they wanna-- they-- again, this is nonsensical. It's not a legitimate policy issue, right? Like, there's no need for this. But this is the culture war that they want to engage in so that we're all talking about it. And we're all, like, we have to play defense. While the other-- on the other side, you know, they get to win elections with this messaging. Because, you know, elections are often very close. And you just need to convince a small segment of people, especially presidential elections. You know, the last one was decided with 40,000 voters in three key swing states. And so, they just are throwing everything on the wall. So, anything that sticks, they go with it, right? And so, this happens to be an issue that unfortunately, get a lot of people riled up about. Particularly, people who have never been to a drag show, right? Have never met a queer person. So, it's very easy for them to say, "Well, I don't like them," right? Because this politician is telling me that they're no good, and they're groomers, and that they're pedophiles, and that maybe we should lock them all up, or maybe we should, you know-- And it's very dangerous. It's very, very dangerous to dehumanize a segment of the population like that. And a population where the mortality and suicide rates is already through the roof. Because we are already marginalized in society.
And that's what my argument the other day was about. It's about humanizing just human beings. Just adding that layer of like, these people are breathing. These people are alive. They are not doing it because they want attention. This is how human lives are unfolding. And we live in a day and age where we're, you know, more allowed to become who we are. And therefore, there is a proliferation of more different types of people. And there should be this allowance. And I just don't understand why-- I just don't understand how this is ever gonna improve.
I think, you know, having those tough conversations. Because I think there's a bucket of people who are really-- they're gone, right? Like, we can't convince them. They're just going to-- they believe what they believe, and they're set in their beliefs. But there's a larger bucket of people who just need to meet a queer person or need to hear stories about how they are just trying to live their lives. Like, I can't tell you how many drag shows I've been to where I'm sitting there and I just think, "How could anyone dislike this?" Right? It's a performance, it's an art. They are trying to entertain you, entertain us, and just put a smile on our faces with their performance. And why would you hate this if you saw it in person? And it is my belief that many people just don't-- just haven't seen for themselves. And they believe, you know, what people on the other side tells them. And it is unfortunate. And I think we can't-- we have to change it. There's no other choice, right? We have to fight back against these legislations, first of all. We have to make the argument that our humanity comes before anything else. Like, don't get your-- don't let your political beliefs get in the way of seeing each other's humanity.
But what if it's just an issue of popularizing, which is happening a lot in the media, popularizing more of the LGBTQ community? And I think it's more normalized today than it was maybe perhaps 10 years ago. And I think the more that people in the media landscape perpetuate these humanized stories of human beings, there might be some sort of, you know, an acceptance, a growing acceptance of people of all stripes and colors.
Men in drag on Vietnamese media. That was a very normal thing, growing up for me, to see, you know, men dress as-- dress femininely and perform skits, sing. LGBTQ communities are on Vietnamese media constantly. And I think that's a great, great thing that, like, you know, for a country that doesn't allow free speech necessarily, that is a great thing to have. And I think growing up with those kind of images normalized it for me and made me feel that I could express my way and express myself in certain ways. And I think you're right. Like, part of it is to popularize the idea in media. But the fact is that American media is so segmented right now, right? We do not get the same information as somebody in the South or even in the inland empire, for example. We just do not share the same media interests anymore. And so, that's hard. And, you know, everyone is watching different things. They have their own rabbit holes that they get into. So, it's a difficult thing to say that, you know, we just have-- this is a media issue to solve. I think it's a-- that is more of a systemic problem.
Are violent crimes against Asian-Americans going up or down?
It depends on where you are. I think-- I think in the past couple of years, we know that the data shows that hate crimes against Asian-Americans, and all groups, by the way-- Black, Jewish, Latinx, immigrants, have gone exponentially up. Those crimes are well-documented because hate crimes by federal law has to be documented. And we know that those crimes nationally, in California, in Los Angeles, for example, have more than 100%. So, we know that.
Wow. And again, my question is, is there hope for that to dwindle?
There is a crisis of hate in America right now. We are living through another one of those inflection points in America where marginalized communities are being attacked constantly on a regular basis. And I'm talking, you know, physical attacks, but also, again, non-physical attacks. So, attacks that have to do with your psyche, right? If you are constantly-- we are constantly going outside and being scared that we will be attacked because of our identity, how we show up, that is a problem. That causes racial trauma, right? That causes-- takes away your sense of-- That causes um uh takes away your sense of safety in the world. And without that, causes a lot of stress on the body. And we know that, we we think that that is also just as big of a problem as the hate crimes numbers going up, right? So what we want to do at Stop API Hate is have that larger conversation to have better civil rights protections for everyone across the board. So that means, you know, agencies like the LA Civil Rights Department need to be replicated across the country. We want everyone to be able to report, get a response, and get a resolution about their case, right? If it's a neighbor-on-neighbor conflict or doesn't matter, if it's a school or um anybody, you know, on the bus like that, you should be able to get your a a case complaint filed and a response and resolution. Frankly, the burden should be on the government to do that, right? We should not be as citizens um have the responsibility of of um enforcing civil rights laws, right? Like, the law is enforced by the government, and so the government should build up the infrastructure to enforce the laws. So right now, they don't have any of that infrastructure. We have federal civil rights departments that are often too focused on the larger uh uh impactful cases, uh you know, uh like a like a whole university that is not doing something for the whole student body, right? They don't really open and take cases about individual uh conflict or even just, you know, a a neighbor or landlord discriminating against you. So we want to have local agencies to s- spend money, first of all, right? Uh, that uh to build out these departments and commissions, but also to do it in a way that is culturally and linguistically competent, right? Um, my Vietnamese mom is not going to go online and file a civil rights complaint. Should one of her nail salon customers um yell racial epithets at her, right? That's just not gonna happen. So how do we meet her and people like her where they are during this process? And making sure that they know when they report, something's actually gonna happen, right? Or at least they get a response. What's happening right now is people from all over the country, they're getting into uh they're they they're on the street and they're being called uh a racial slur or their neighbor called them a racial slur. They instinctively call the police, which is a natural reaction, right? For a system that this is the one that we have now. But guess what? The police is gonna come. They gonna say, what happened? Oh, you didn't get hurt? They didn't destroy your property? We can't do anything about it. That's what they're gonna say. They're gonna say, that is within that person's First Amendment right to call you that name. And now that's not true, right? That's not true, but that's what the police relies on. They're not gonna, sometimes they won't even take down an incident report, and then they leave. And then what you're left with is hopelessness, a feeling that nobody is taking this seriously. My reporting won't matter. And so you you just carry on with your lives. And, you know, you have to live with what happened to you. And that causes, again, a lot of racial trauma and stress on the body. Um, so we wanna also fix that process.
So Huang, you're appointed as an LA Commissioner. How did that come about and what is the significance of this position for you?
Well, maybe I'll take you back to um when I first came to America. I know, um, it's a roundabout way of answering it, but um I think it's important because when I uh immigrated to America, I was ten years old. Um, my parents and I and my sister got on a plane sponsored by my uncle to uh, you know, uh uh pursue, quite frankly, the American dream. And I I didn't know what was happening. I didn't speak a lick of English. So I I was dropped into this um world, this new world, and was uh, you know, um, left to fend, frankly, for myself. Uh, I went to middle school where in in Westminster, where half the kids were Vietnamese. And yet, um, I did not get paired with a Vietnamese teacher. Um, I was with a white English-speaking teacher. Um, well, I did not speak any English. And so um I I really struggled to uh get accustomed um to the the culture and the kids were not very nice, quite frankly. Uh, I didn't speak, you know, we 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 shared our Vietnamese identity and that was about it, right? Um, I did not speak the language. I did not know the culture. I did not dress like them. And so I was in, uh, you know, there was a lot of bullying going on. Uh, and it wasn't until I got to high school that um I learned a little more English, that I got used to the culture and I was assimilating. Um, I actually, you know, changed my middle name uh dur- uh during the process, changed my middle name from man, which means strength in Vietnamese, to uh to an English middle name, which I don't even use now. And so, you know, that process of assimilation happens for a lot of uh newer arrivals in America. Uh, we were on public benefits, government benefits, food stamps, Medicaid, all of that, right? Um, that gave my family some uh relief um to, you know, continue to work hard and um send me and my sister to college. So I got into UCLA on a full ride um somehow. And um started my college journey um uh trying to pursue the arts. Uh, I was, I got, I got into the the theater school and was gonna pursue theater d- directing. That was, you know, what I was passionate about in high school, what I did in high school. Found out quickly that I was not equipped for that. I um was not equipped with, frankly, the intergenerational wealth that a lot of my classmates had to continue a career in the arts. And so I I left, um transferred out to do political science at the time when um Donald Trump was rising up in the Republican polls and and um eventually he became president and and I wanted to be of service to people um like my families, working class, who never has a voice in government. And so I joined government. So after college, I got a job uh within the LA County Government, worked for an elected official there and rose up the ranks to uh eventually become um her deputy um to manage a wide policy portfolio and community affairs portfolio. And so there, I established the uh LA versus Hate Initiative, which is um a multimillion-dollar program bu- ran by the county to collect hate incidents, for example, and connect people who experience hate with services. So that program is still going strong today. Um, and then I left that job for um a profit job, which I have right now, uh was noticed uh by the mayor of LA when she got into office. Um, and she selected me as her appointee on the LA Civil Rights Commission.
Very roundabout way to get into politics, but it all makes sense after you describe it. Because without those sort of early years and the pain that you go through, the motivation and the driving forces uh oftentimes don't push you far enough to get through to the political wall.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. What I what I like to say is that I got lucky, right? I'm not particularly smarter or harderworking than any anybody else. That's that's the fact. But I got lucky, right? And I I think, I believe that in achieving the American dream, it should be less about luck and more about talent and hard work. Um, and that's just not the case um today, right? Um, two people are left behind today, uh even though they have the innate talent and 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 the hard work. Uh, they just don't have the third, the third thing, which is, you know, um people who look back and pull you out, right? People who can mentor you, and that's what I had. Um, I had some incredible mentors who knew that I could do it and offer me the opportunity to do it. Uh, and and I hope to do the same um for, you know, the younger generation.
I understand that getting appointed is a really big deal. However, there is no pay. This is all volunteer basis. Can you explain to me why there's no pay attached to that?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we we want to be able to not have any conflicts, uh, right? Conflicts of interest um in our position. These are public service positions that often come with no pay. There are um only one, there is only one commission on it within the whole entire city that actually pays a salary. Um, and so most of it is volunteer. There is a um, there is a problem with that, right? That you're donating all your time um and it's unpaid. Um, so it it tends to be folks who are older, more well-established in their financial means that could serve on these commissions, that could ha- could have time to serve on these commissions. So I'm actually one of the youngest appointees by the mayor. I'm I'm twenty-seven and that is really, really young to be appointed to a a city commission. Um, all of the other commissioners on on my uh commission are in their senior-level career. They are CEOs and law partners. Uh, and so I feel sometimes really out of place, and that's natural. Um, I've I've come to terms with that, though, that I know I can do the job and I can do it well. And it doesn't matter what my age and what my resume says. Um, as long as I work hard and apply myself, um, I can do it. And that that's a message for for all young people trying to get appointed to these prestigious uh positions, which is that, look, everyone is um flawed somehow and everyone is trying their best. And so as long as you're doing that, I think you'll be fine. Um, and we need to open those doors for young people to be involved now, right? Um, the older generations like to say that, you know, the 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 next generation is our future and young people are our future. But um we need those positions now, right? To be able to make change where we're facing some really, really tough issues down the road that we need young people at those tables right now.
What inspires you to continue to do this work? Because if it's not the money, what is it?
It's certainly not the money. I say, um, um, uh, often I say, if you want to get rich in politics, get out of politics. Um, so it's not about the money. And and I know um many people who come from where we come from, right? Immigrant background, um rightfully care about taking care of their families and and their financial future. Uh, because we 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 didn't have it back in our homes, uh home countries. And that's that's perfectly valid. Um, my heart is in making change, making a dent in the world, right? Part of me just wants to do what the people in my life has done for me, which is, you know, they saw something in me and they gave me the opportunities. And that's why I'm so grateful and I want to give back. Um, I saw how those those government services, those food stamp cards and the Medicare, the 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 medical care that my parents received through government programs. Um, I saw those as lifesaving.
Yeah.
And I want to make it better, make those processes better. And that's what I'm doing now, right, in this job even. There's a part of me that always goes back to um trying to change the world, right? Like, uh, there's there's righteous indignation in my belly for some reason. When I see injustice, I can't really just stand on the sidelines and watch. Um, especially now that I've had, um, you know, half a decade of government experience. Uh, we put everything on our shoulders when we were in the government. Um, um, we we saw it as issues that we could solve and that we should sho- solve. And I think there should be more, more and more people who are willing to roll up their sleeves and get into um government work, nonprofit work, advocacy, political work. Because if we're not there,
Yeah.
there is gonna be other people who come into those positions. And those other people might not be the best for our communities.
Yeah.
So let's let's talk about the Vietnamese community um and our lack of representation, right? Uh, like, there's lack of representation in government for Asian Americans across the board. But for Vietnamese communities, it's even worse, right? I am often the only Vietnamese person, the only queer person, the only young person in a lot of the rooms I was in when I was in the government and even now. And so that needs to change. If we're not at the table, we're on the menu.
I've never heard that before. Did you just take that out, Huang?
No, this is something I say to a lot of people.
Where'd you get that from? That's a, that's a hilarious comment. Oh, my God, I'm gonna start using that from now on. That is hilarious.
And it's it's very true. I see.
Yeah, the permission to use that every, I will credit you if that came.
I'm sure it's from, you know, some great writer and poet, but um remember where I got it from. But it's so, it it, I remember it so clearly because it's so true. It's my experience that if I am not the one raising issues about language justice, about cultural uh cultural competency, it doesn't get addressed, right? So we did, uh, I did, you know, I had to set up programs for the government. And I was the one, I was sort of like the boss in the room because of who my boss was, right? Like, she was the elected official, and so she had a lot of powers. And with that, I took that to represent my communities. I I took, I used it to say, hey, you need to think about our immigrant mothers and grandmothers. Um, you need to think about these kids that don't have, you know, access to good education, right? Um, who who just came from another country, like, what are you doing about them? So, um, you know, I I hope to continue to use, you know, these powers that I have, that people have given to me for goo- for good. Um, and, you know, if if there are mistakes and bumps on the roads, um, I'm happy to uh to take responsibility and 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 no one's perfect. And I think like more, and I just hope that more and more people get into this this line of work. Um, and you don't have to, like, get a job in government. You can serve um on a commission or board uh or on a volunteer basis.
If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Oh, let's remember that. What does it mean to be Vietnamese to you?
For a long time, I struggled with um that identity. I think in the beginning, when I I immigrated here, being Vietnamese was really um I I I I thought myself as not being American. That that was, in my mind, I didn't think about the Vietnamese part. I I, because it was so hard at first to assimilate. And I was constantly being made fun of for, you know, having an accent uh or not speaking uh English or not saying the right words, that I wished so much to be American, to have an American family, and, you know, watch Disney Channel. And you thought so bad that I ignored my Vietnamese culture. Even though I was, you know, in Westminster, um Vietnamese town, surrounded by so many Vietnamese people, I just did not um want to associate myself with that. So it wasn't until I got to college, when I did um Vietnamese Student Union, I did a Vietnamese Culture Night, like, I acted in in the shows and and wrote some of it, that I started to reconnect, right? Um, and went back to Vietnam and saw and remember what I love about our culture, um, our food, our community. Um. And to me it means mainly resilience. Being Vietnamese. Like you have to have a lot of resilience. Um, not only. Uh, our, our parents and our ancestors, but, but us ourselves. Um, the generation now. And. Uh, uh, you know, the war was not that long ago. You know. Relatives, relatively speaking. There's still a lot of. Traumas that still exist to this day. Um, with our parents' generation or grandparents, but with our generation as well. And the more we talk about that, I know like people don't like to talk about it, but. We should, we must be having these conversations in order to heal. Um. And to see how far. A lot of us have come, right? Um. It's amazing. It's a good outcome, but it's also, we have to be clear-eyed on how far, how, how far, how much further we have to go because. Just as there are many Vietnamese professionals making it in the entertainment business world, political world. There are just as many. New arrivals. Low-income people, seniors. That need our help. So I hope that we can turn, that we can use that resilience that we have innately as a community to. Make sure that. Our most marginalized. Our most impacted communities are. Um, coming along with us. Um, yeah.
Do you have a vision, a plan? An idea? Of your future as it is leveraged? From this point in the LA Commissioner's position?
No. Uh, that's the quick answer. I mean, a lot of people ask me what, what's, what's your next move? Like, are you? Are you gonna run for office? Are you gonna? Do XYZ? And I, I say, you know, um, we're all trying to. Um. We're all trying to survive. We're trying to make the best and live in the present. Um, and that's, that's what I'm trying to do. There's no immediate plans of like what I'm trying to do next yet. Um. And, and that's just, that's just the fact. I'm sorry, I can't give you a, a better answer, but.
Uh, no, I, I, all jokes aside, joking and not joking, but. Most politicians that I've ever talked to answer that way. And I think that it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a way to sort of like say, you know what? It's a blank slate. I see where we're gonna go, but. It just seems like a lot of people in politics always answer like, no, 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 I'm living right now to serve right now, here in the moment. Um, and there's no future, sort of like, there's no talk of like any positions.
Well, I can give you a definitive, almost definitive answer about running for office. I don't intend to. Run for office anytime soon at least. Um. I am much more comfortable, um, being behind the scenes and, and affecting policy that way and. But not to say that running for office is inherently bad or good. Um, I think it takes a very specific type of person to run for office. Um. You have to appease and compromise, uh, which is one of the main tenants. Uh, I don't really do it. I don't really do it that well. Uh, to, to compromise. I have, I, I'm very firm in my beliefs. Um. And you sacrifice a lot. Uh, you have to make a lot of sacrifices to run for office. Um. But people should do it. If you are in position to do it and you come from an underrepresented community with ours. Um, please, please, I will support you. I will be behind the scenes, on the sidelines cheering you on. Um, to run for office, but right now, me personally, um. You know, I'm not gonna do it, uh, anytime soon. Uh, that might change, uh, you know, that door is still slightly ajar. But. Uh, you know, you don't see me fundraising and, and. Ho- uh, holding campaign meetings, uh, right now. You won't see me doing that.
Huang, thank you so much for today. I look forward to seeing. You in the community like we did last weekend and I look forward to the work that you will be accomplishing as an LA Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Kenneth. What you're doing with this podcast is amazing, building community and that's what we need.
Thank you for the kind words. Thank you for listening to The Vietnamese with Kenneth Nguyen. Special thanks to Brittany Tran, to Jane Nguyen, Catherine Nguyen, Tina Pham, Sidney Jamie and Chris O'Trin. Please find us on Instagram, Facebook and TikTok at The Vietnamese Podcast.